Good afternoon and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's public hearing for Wednesday, February 10, 2021, relative to Bill 2021-1048. Will the clerk please read the title of the bill?
Bill 1048 Resolution Providing For The Designation Of Historic Structure On The Title XI Of The Code Of Portnices At Certain Site Known As Melon Park Located In Point Breeze, Seventh And The Fourteenth Ward Of The City. The City Of Pittsburgh Is The Owner Of This Property And There Has Been No Objection To The Nomination.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Our first order of business will be presentation by Sarah Quinn From The City's Planning Department, Followed By Testimony From Our Registered Speakers.
I didn't share my screen with you guys.
Yeah. Before we begin, please let me, let the record reflect that we've been joined by Councilwoman Deb Gross.
Hello, everybody. My name's Sarah Quinn. I'm the Preservation Planner For The City. And as the clerk said, we have a nomination for Melon Park in front of you all today. I'll go ahead and scroll back to the photographs because that's really what gives you an idea of the great, the great things this park has. But Melon Park is a 33-acre city park located at the intersection of Shady Side, Point Breeze, and Squirrel Hill neighborhoods in the east end of Pittsburgh. It's five miles from downtown and is comprised of land that were formerly the estates of the Melon, Marshall, Skae, Frue, and Darcy families. Its private estates were acquired by the City of Pittsburgh and unified into a city park in the middle 1940s and 50s while retaining aspects of their original architecture. And I must say, this is one of the most complete and thorough nominations we've ever got. These guys did a great job on this. And I've pulled some, some specific facts out, but I certainly recommend anybody that has a further interest in, in the park should definitely read the nomination. It's posted on the Historic Review Commission's website. But back to the part. The Melon, the Melon House, which was once the greatest and grandest of the mansions that line Fifth Avenue, was demolished prior to the creation of the park. But its associated gardens and landscaped remains with varying degrees of integrity. The Frue and Darcy houses were also demolished. The 1911 Colonial Revival Marshall Mansion still stands near the intersection of Fifth and Shady Avenues. To its south-facing Shady Avenue is the Tudor Revival House formerly of Alan McGee Skae and his wife. Sarah Melon Skae, Sarah Melon Skae was the original donor of Melon Park, along with her brother Richard King Melon. The siblings had grown up in the Melon Mansion and donated the family estate to the city in memory of their parents, Richard Beatty Melon and Jeanie King Melon, in 1943. The Marshall property was added in 1944, and the Frue and Darcy properties located east of the Melon Estate in 1948. As I said, after the Melons died in the 1930s, their 65 men, 65, 65-room mansion was demolished, and their children, Richard King and Sarah Melon Skae, donated the landscape grounds to the city park. Additional land was acquired by the mountain, by, for the park size, bringing the park size to 33 acres by the 1950s. Landscape gardens designed for the Melons in the teens, twenties, and thirties by Alden and Harlow, Vitalian Giefert, and the Olmstead Brothers are examples of the best private landscape design money could buy in those years. Subsequent landscape work commissioned to adapt the Melon Estate and adjacent properties for use as a public park displayed work of the notable landscape architecture in the mid 20th century, including Ralph Bruswell, Gilmore, G. Clark, and Simons and Simons, and shows sensitivity to the original landscape's historic character. Basically, what happened, the way it's described, is that as the 20th, 20th century progressed, large Victorian mansions, which is what these homes were, fell from fashion and maintenance costs rose as the houses aged. Many of the affluent property owners along Fifth and Penn Avenues decamped for suburban homes in upscale suburbs such as Fox Chapel and Sulwickly Heights. Unable to sell their enormous city homes and unwilling to continue to pay property taxes on them, many families demolished them. The loss of Millionaire's Row was hastened by legislation in the 1940s that rezoned Fifth Avenue to permit apartment buildings. Night, in 1908, the Melons commissioned architects Alden and Harlow to design a $3 million mansion, this in Jacobian revival style, completed in 1911. Alden and Harlow also designed the landscape and romantic parkland, formal guards, and architectural elements. Most elaborate among these was the Terrace Garden with its brick-and-stone balustrades, garden walls of dark tapestry brick red with terracotta coating. New York former Vitalian Giefert designed the walled garden to replace a horseshoe-shaped garden in 29, 1929. The Melons had been introduced to Vitalian Giefert, a prominent New York-based designer of country estates and private gardens by Arthur Vining Davis, president of Alcoa. It's Long Island Estate Vitalian Giefert had designed, then with partner, Arthur Brinkerhoff, in 1922. In his monograph, Veruccio Vitale states that Melon commissioned the garden as a setting for the upcoming wedding of his daughter Sarah Skae. Perhaps this wasn't his intention, but it's not how commissioned work turned out. The Melon Skae wedding took place in an East Liberty Presbyterian Church, while Vitalian Giefert's plans for the garden are dated 1929. In sculpture for the garden and stone foundation, three bronze figures of young women were provided by Edmund Amateus, a sculptor of national renown. The Olmstead Brothers worked intermittently through 1931 with the Melon family during the Great Depression, but did not commission any more work after that. Most of the Olmstead's firm, firms' work consisted of updating and revising the plantings of the grounds and gardens designed by Alden and Harlow. They added a new feature unlike any other, any other on the property, a Japanese-themed lily pond at the bend in the drive of the south end of the Beechwood Boulevard Parkland. Excellent documentation of this and the Olmstead Brothers' other designs for Melon Estate exists, although none of the actual planting survived. By 1942, the final 11 acres to be donated by the Melon's slash Skae family were added as a park. And the condition of the gift included prohibition against through roads in the park and the city's commitment to maintain the Melon's landscaping insofar as reasonably could, consistent with proper said use of property. Days later, it says, Charles Marshall, a steel executive, and his wife Dora Marshall, offered adjoining estate to the city to be used in any manner or authority. See, see. Located within Fifth Avenue, the two-acre property, including a large swank house and carriage house. City officials differed on how to receive this gift. Councilwoman A.L. Wool proposed dedicating the house to serve as a cultural haven for artists, musicians, performers, and students. However, his colleague, Councilwoman Edward Leonard, was opposed to accepting the property unless a baseball diamond could be put upon it, an impractical suggestion due to the over-the-land. On May 24, 1944, Council's Finance Committee voted six to three to add the Marshall property to Melon Park. Wool's faction prevailed, and the following March, the Marshall Mansion opened to the public as an arts and crafts center and the Pittsburgh Craft, Arts and Crafts Center of Pittsburgh, with exhibit performance spaces on the ground floor and offices for a 10-member organization on the upper floors. In 1946, the Melons donated three additional parcels totaling over 15 acres, bringing the total to 29 acres. Finally, an additional four acres were taken into the park boundaries as a result of tax delinquency. While each individual change in the park over the years has been minor, cumulatively, 70 years of changes have had this somewhat of an impact on the park. Recent initiatives in the late 20th and 21st centuries have sought to remedy some of the damage and neglect to restore the intent, if not the specifics, of the park's historic landscape. So what else I have here? As far as significance of the property goes, Melon Park is seen as sort of a museum for the landscape profession, landscape architecture, in that I don't think there's any other place in the country that has more high-quality-designed landscape available to the public at any given time, free of charge. These are places that folks that were very, very wealthy had built, and now anyone can go to them. And that's, that's, that is significant in itself. It's, the park is definitely that exemplification of innovative design and craftsmanship. And I think for the most part, that's what I have for you guys today. As I said, there's, there's, there's plenty in the nomination you can read and, and the staff report, in fact, that I sent to you all. So we can look at some of the photos. Here's the Terrace Garden views. Your Terrace Garden views. Oh, I don't, where is it? If I didn't mark this page. Fifth Avenue, there's the general location. Well, so that's what I have for you. I, you know, this was, this was great to work on. I know the neighborhood is, there's a vast amount of support for this nomination. Yeah, so that's, that's what I have for you guys today.
Thank you, Sarah. I appreciate it. That's, I learn something new every time I hear the history of Melon Park and all of its different properties that have been combined into one. I, I learned something new, so I appreciate that. I, I do want to open it up to our, our list of registered speakers, but before I do, I wanted to just ask a question so that we have it in the public record and that we have it clarified now. Melon Park is a, it's a smaller park, but it's, there's a lot packed in there. And I think when people think of Melon Park, they might think of it as, you know, a park that has baseball diamonds and a spray park and basketball court, and on the other side of Fifth has, you know, sprawling gardens and green space. Are you able to explain to the public a little bit more about what we are, what, you know, what portions of the park we're talking about, deeming historic? If it's so defined in that way, if it's defined geographically as that way?
Well, it's, it's what it's based on. The way we, we need to have it recorded in the ordinance, in the legislation, as well as in our permitting system is by parcel. So we've included, I think the original nomination included five parcels. And I actually pulled one out because it was the little triangular piece located between several roads. I can see the map in my head, but I can't see it. We've included 84 S250, 84 S251, 85 D50, and 125 and 200. And, I mean, every nomination, every historic property is going to be unique, especially this one. And what, you know, we've got, the other park we have listed in the city is Allegheny Commons. So we, we have, we have a history of reviewing projects and things like that in Allegheny Commons. I think, I think what we need to do here is really sort of adapt our review process to what makes the most sense for what the park is used for. I can tell you that actually yesterday, I had a conversation with Tony Cavallini, who is the, one of the art staff here with City Planning, and he actually asked me the same question. And what I said was, if we can, if we can create, determine where sort of, I don't want to call it a safe zone, because that sounds a little weird. But if we can, can, if we can create a space where the art folks can do whatever they want to do in it, as long as they're not doing any demolition or, or doing any ground-moving activities, all they would need to do is just let us know if they're going to be moving an art piece or not, or something like that. I think, I think we're, what we're going to need to do is just handle things as they come up, because really, it would be folks, because it's a city property, we would be dealing mostly with public works. So we would just need to see, we would just need, we would just need to evaluate each, each project on its own merits. And we do that now, we do that for Allegheny Commons. So I'm not sure if that answered your question or not. But.
Yeah, I think it's just helpful to be able, it does. And it, it's, I think it helps to be able to understand that, look like, not every, just because the entire park is being named historic doesn't mean that redeeming, you know, parts that have been modernized since what might be considered historic time.
Oh, no.
Or being historic, just so people have a full understanding of that, if they might be watching.
Yeah. No, I, I mean, everything, everything that's, that's at the park right now is grandfathered. And so there's, there's no, there's no worries about that. And anything that's there can be replaced in kind. And we, like I said, we've done that up at Allegheny Commons, where we had an old playground equipment that was like wooden and splintered, and they wanted to replace it with some kaboom playground equipment. And we said, as long as it's like in the same spot, I would suggest some earth tones, and that's what they did. They put some earth tones, and they did it, and that's fine. That's, that's an absolutely fine thing to do. So.
That's a perfect clarification. Thank you.
Is it? Okay, good.
Yeah, I think that's a great example. Like, if we wanted to modernize, say, the spray park in some way, what restrictions might be there? And you're saying there's not really going to be a restriction to the spray, on the spray park portion of it.
No, not at all, not at all, not at all. I mean, I think, I think it's about, it's about being sensible. And I think as we, as time goes on and as we work through a few of these, you know, we'll, we'll be able to get into a rhythm with them, you know? It, it's just some, it's not, it's not as easy as, or not as hard as people. It's, if we can work, we can work, we can work through anything. We've always worked through anything, so no worries.
Thank you. I want to open it up to Councilwoman Gross. If, Councilwoman, if you're here with us and you have any questions.
Councilman, can we have Sarah Quinn to please unshare? There we go. Thank you.
Thank you.
I shall. Oh, you did, okay. Sorry.
Thank you. I'll just be brief. Thank you, Sarah. We always enjoy the presentations. We don't really need to answer this at this time, but I was also, I was clicking around on my computer, and I couldn't find my current copy of the legislation in all of the various council agendas. So I was, I'll look back at that because I was, Councilwoman Strasburger's questions made me think of how our ordinance does or doesn't allow us to categorize or specify built environment or hardscape elements or something like that. So I really appreciated the fact that you highlighted that the garden design itself was historically important and, and an important element to, for us to preserve for future generations and for the common enjoyment. But that it's different than a built structure like a house that is inhabited, right? So it's just a moment that I need to learn about, like how we've seen, when I was on the board of the Young Preservation Association, back when I was young, we tried to nominate things that were important, like fence railings or stone walls or stairs, and so other parts of the built environment, like would be elements in a landscaped park that aren't what you think of as like a home or a building. So I'll, I'll go back and do my homework on this one to, to read the full language of the legislation so that I can see kind of how those are being named. It's just an interesting topic in general.
Yeah, our, our, our categories are based on what's used by the National Register, and it's object site building. And then you could have discontinuous resources, like out west, you would have mines and a miner camp, or something like that, would all be related, but they would be very distant. Or you could do it even in Pennsylvania with like railroad trestles or the city stops. Hey, you know?
Definitely. PHLF, I was on one of their subsidiary boards before I was elected, and they were even looking at preserving rural vistas. So from the point of the place, the things that you can see, and trying to so preserve that entire open space, it's just, it's, I think, it's just an area of interest of mine, so I appreciate, appreciate pointers, and I'll, I'll go look for those myself. But thank you, Councilwoman Strasburger. That's, that's really all I wanted to say. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilwoman. With, with no more questions that I can see, we will now move on to testimony from registered speakers. So I would ask that the speakers, who will be unmuted by us, please give your name and address for the public record, and each speaker will have three minutes to address counsel. I'll, I'll also announce the person that we have next, followed by the person on deck afterward. So the person we have first up is Elizabeth Siemens, followed by Margaret Abby Wilson.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Elizabeth. Hi.
Hi. My name is Elizabeth Siemens. I live at 549 Glen Arden Drive in Pittsburgh, Point Breeze section. I'm the president of the Friends Of Melon Park Organization. And on behalf of our board and all the friends of Melon Park, I just first want to say how deeply grateful we are to Erica Strasburger and also to Sarah Quinn, who have brought us to this place and have done so much wonderful work. And also to Matthew Falcone at Preservation Pittsburgh. There's so many people to thank. We, we just have been so lucky in, in the people who have mentored us and helped us. And I just want to say that in COVID times, you don't get to feel hopeful all that often. And this is just a wonderful moment when we, we feel good about city council. We, we have indications that this historic nomination will go through. I, I don't have to tell you how important it is. I, I will point out that it's located at a crossroads in our city where Shady Side and Squirrel Hill meet East Liberty, where Larmour and North and South Point Breeze come together, and where we really feel that the preservation of this park is going to give us a wonderful opportunity to build equity and community across a whole section of the east end of Pittsburgh so that everybody can enjoy this park on both sides of Fifth Avenue. There's lots of work to be done in the park. There are two historic buildings whose future is uncertain. There's Terrace Gardens that are in disrepair. There's lots, always lots to do in public spaces. And we just love having you all as partners, and we, we look forward to the adventure to come. So just thank you, and here we go.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Next, we have Margaret Abby Wilson, and then on deck is Kathleen Farrington.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman Strasburger and Councilwoman Gross. It's nice to see you. You can't see me, but hello. And I also want to thank all the public servants who are working to make this meeting possible and adapting in all this craziness. You all just do a really amazing job. And I'll also say that as a woman, I am so proud to see a female sign language interpreter, and just, I'm just really, my cup runneth over. And to echo some of what Mrs. Siemens said, it's really been an honor and a pleasure to be a part of this journey. And I enthusiastically support the historic designation of Melon Park. I'm sharing this testimony on behalf of dozens of my friends who have spent many, many decades playing and walking and thinking in, in the park. Many of us went to school across the street, and many of us have come to know the park more recently. I am definitely not an expert on the historic status of the property, but that's obviously been well documented, so I won't attempt to cover that ground. But as a former public servant, I do also want to just share my enthusiasm for the power that this designation would afford all the people who enjoy Melon Park and make its existence possible, to really protect that space going forward and to ensure that its evolution over time unfolds in a, in a public and community-oriented way. And I also just want to thank you, Councilwoman Strasburger, for raising the questions about the active side of Melon Park, because I do think it's so important to clarify for the public that we also want to preserve activities there that might not be part of this, like, superhistoric landscape design. So I think that's all, but thank you, thank you, thank you, everyone. And, oh, I should also share that I serve on the board of the Friends Of Melon Park as well. Have a great day.
Thank you. Right. Next, we have Kathleen Farrington, and on deck is Joy Sato.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yeah, I couldn't hear you for a minute there. My name is Kathleen Farrington. I live at 602 South Lang Avenue in Point Breeze, and I'm also the president of the Point Breeze Organization. We recently, with Councilperson Strasburger's help, became a registered community organization. And Melon Park is within our borders. Our whole board is, strongly supports that Melon Park become a historic landmark. And, you know, we'd support that designation. It's a huge asset to Point Breeze, both for recreation and some events, such as Beethoven Bach's Brunch, which I hope we can get back to soon. And I also like the fair and the park each September. It's one of my favorite outdoor events, and I hope we can get back to that soon as well. I also have a personal interest in the park in that my daughter was married there 22 years ago. So thank you very much for your, for your help, Councilperson Strasburger. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Joy Sato, followed by Matthew Falcone. Ms. Joy here. Okay, well, for the time being, we'll move on to Matthew Falcone, followed by Santina Silo.
Hi, I'm, can you hear me?
Yes. We can hear you.
Okay. I'm Matthew Falcone. I'm the president of Preservation Pittsburgh. And our organization has worked with a myriad of neighbors and community groups to bring this nomination. And our organization has worked with a myriad of neighbors and community groups to bring this nomination in front of you today. And what I can say that has not already been said is just how wonderful it's, it's been to see the community so engaged and so enthusiastically supportive of looking at this park through a historical lens and ensuring that it has a kind of a bright and vibrant future. And, you know, it's been a real pleasure to work with everyone. And in addition to that, I will say that the park itself is an absolute gem in Pittsburgh. You know, our organization has worked in partnership with the Parks Conservancy and with the city for years, looking at our parks' regional assets and trying to raise their historical kind of information into the public's view. And, and Melon Park is kind of a wonderful addition to that, to that program. And I hope that all of council will move to make this a historic landmark with the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Santina, followed by Brandon Riley. Do we have Santina here? It's like, no, so we'll move on to Brandon Riley.
Hi, my name is Brandon Riley. I live at four ten Lamar Avenue in Regent Square. And I am pleased to be here, speaking on behalf of the Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy and our support of the historic designation for Melon Park. Melon Park is truly a unique open space in the city's park system, and it's rich in both culture and history as well as recreational opportunities. And just to echo the things that were covered in the presentation, the two sides of the park really exemplify two distinct periods of park planning or landscape architecture with, you know, the former Melon Estate exemplifying private estate design from the early nineteenth century or twentieth century. Sorry. That was, you know, really intended for the enjoyment of the wealthy elite, but is now a public asset that people can access for free anywhere from the city. And on the north side, the north section, the active section, is really an example of some of the sound design principles of public park design and planning from the nineteen fifties. And that the designers were able to provide a variety of active and passive recreational amenities in a relatively small footprint, but yet the park still feels open and doesn't feel overcrowded. But both of those, both sides of the park taken together really are provide a number of active and passive recreation opportunities. And they're a key open space asset for many of the communities that surround Melon Park immediately adjacent to it, as well as the greater city as a whole. You know, the Parks Conservancy believes Melon Park is one of Pittsburgh's signature open spaces. We've partnered with the city and others to restore the walled garden, perform extensive tree planting through the park and other ongoing efforts to really improve the park and make it a successful open space for the city's residents. And we're just really excited that the park is finally getting the recognition and the nomination for historic designation that it truly deserves. Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon. Next up, we have Raymond Baum. And I also wanted to acknowledge, I'm trying to texture, but I don't know if it's going through. Ms. Joy, if you can hear us, we, we did try to unmute you, but it seems like there are some technical difficulties. And if you can, for us, we can try to get you a phone number for you to call in by, by phone instead, so you can offer your testimony. But in the meantime, Raymond Baum is up next. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Ray Baum. I live at sixteen twenty-eight C Overton Lane, Pittsburgh one five two one seven. I'm speaking on behalf of the Squirrel Hill Urban Coalition, which is located at fifty-six oh four Solway Street, Pittsburgh one five two one seven. First of all, personally, I want to endorse everything that's been said before and express my gratitude for the way this has all been handled, especially by Friends of Melon Park and Sarah Quinn and Councilwoman Strasburger. My, my statement, which I've submitted in writing, is brief, is brief. The Squirrel Urban Coalition supports the proposed historic designation of Melon Park as recommended by the city Historic Review Commission. Melon Park is a precious jewel that greatly enhances the community in the city of Pittsburgh. The coalition has been working with and supporting the Point Breeze Organization and the Friends of Melon Park to protect, preserve, and enhance Melon Park. We submitted a letter supporting the nomination of Melon Park for historic status when the application began. We support the Historic Review Commission's finding that Melon Park qualifies for historic designation under Title XI of the City Code, Section B three. It's an exemplification of architectural type style and designs that's distinguished by innovation. Its rarity, uniqueness, and overall quality of design and detail and craftsmanship are exemplary. Thank you again, and I will yield the balance of my time.
Thank you, Ray. At this time, we have exhausted our speakers list, and I wanted to open it up to, we'll, we'll still try to, through email, try to see if we can get our additional speaker calling in or, or her testimony read in some way or another. But in the meantime, I did want to open it up to Councilwoman Gross. Do you have any questions or final comments or other thoughts that you'd like to offer?
I think I always just enjoyed the comments and it was good to hear from the supporters. And thank you all for moving this forward. I appreciate it and I'm very supportive.
Thank you. And I'll just, I'll, I'll close by saying that I really want to thank the speakers for coming out. I also wanted to note that we received thirty-seven separate other comments in support of this historic designation landmark status. And I think that between the diversity of comments that we've heard around all the different aspects and facets of the park, in addition to the written comments we've received, there's clearly community support for this. And I can say assuredly that I support this bill. I'm in favor of it passing and that my colleagues will join me in passing this overwhelmingly. You know, a park is only as great as, as the neighbors who support it. And clearly, we have neighbors who care deeply about not only the maintenance of the park, activities and programming within the park, but and the future of the park, but also the history of the park. And that's a really important aspect of this particular park, which is such a gem as it is. So I'm grateful to everyone who came out, grateful to those who have worked so hard to get us to this point, including Friends of Melon Park, Point Breeze Organization, Squirrel Hill Urban Coalition, Preservation Pittsburgh, and Sarah Quinn, your team. So thank you, everyone. And what I will also do is ensure that our speaker who did not get to speak today, that their, that their testimony is, is made public. She is, okay. I'll unmute you. We'll make sure that your testimony is, is made public and is distributed in a special email to all councils so they are able to see it as well. I apologize. And and with that, I think that we can close. So having exhausted the business of this meeting, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.